I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, February 27th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, One Metcalf Square in Winthrop, and it is being televised live. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Littori?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci? Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Barry?
Yeah.
Ms. Powell?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Swope, can you read us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Pat McGee, who made an incredible contribution to our community. Lisa, do you want to?
Yeah, Pat was a longstanding track coach and volunteer in the Winthrop Public Schools, an icon. We have the track named after Pat McGee, which was really an exciting moment for the school district. She will be very missed by all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, I'll move on to general information, I'm sorry, to our delegates and visitors. We have joining us tonight Town Manager Toni Marino, our new CFO Dylan Cook, and via Zoom we have Sarah Johnson, our finance consultant, here to give us an update on where we stand with the budget and giving us a good look ahead at what's coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, when I started as your Town Manager, one of the things that came up during my interview process was everyone really liked, in my prior town we had what we called the base budget calculation document. What it did was took all of the town and school expenses, put it into the budget total, and basically assigned percentages. Normally, in most towns, you know, schools tend to be somewhere anywhere from 60% to 65%, towns are, you know, the remainder. So this basically assigns, so we created this document, obviously Dylan just started not too long ago, so Sarah was available as a consultant, so I brought her in. She had built the document for me in Ipswich, and so we brought her in to build this document. She worked closely with Robbie Powers to get all the information, to get all the expenses, last year's school budget numbers, you know, this year's projected, and this is what we calculated. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to pass it off to Sarah real quick so she can just sort of tell, you know, let you know how she came up with these numbers and, you know, sort of run through it, and then we can answer some questions, and I'll let you know where we're going from here with this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Sarah Johnson. I've been a municipal finance director for over 15 years. And so I just wanted to give you a brief introduction. This base budget calculation document, the goal of it is to equitably share total revenue between the schools and the town. And the first step to budgeting when you first begin is to review all of your revenues. And so I believe it's probably on the second page of where a handout that Toni gave you. And your estimated levy is your largest revenue source. And so we look at what your actual FY23 levy is, and then we can guess here with a pretty good estimate your FY24 levy. And Toni estimated the FY24 new growth to be the same as last year's. And then the next largest source of funds is your state aid. And the governor on last Thursday put out her new FY24 estimates for the charity income. And it was very generous to Winthrop. It was a $1.8 million increase. And then we look at your local receipts, which is like your third largest revenue source. And as Toni mentioned, Robbie Powers, your Assistant CFO, and I reviewed those. And then the smallest piece is other revenues that are used to help balance the budget. And so when you add all of those sources up, it came to $57,632,908. And so, and then what we did was we added in this increase for the governor's state aid, which now brings your total up to $59,377,345. In order to equitably share that revenue, the easiest way to come at it was to look at your FY23 operating budgets that were already voted. And so we started there with your FY23 school and town budget, and now we're at the top of page one. And then I asked Robbie to give me any other expenses that were either benefiting the schools or made on behalf of the schools. And so some towns, and most of the ones that I've been in previously, all the bulk schools come off the top of the revenue. And he said they've always been in the town budget here. So we listed those in the town budget. And then we looked at state assessments that have been in the town budget, and we wanted to split those up, and then the allowance for abatements, and then shared in the same total percentage. And then we looked at all of the other expenses, and I asked Robbie to give me the numbers for these, that workers' comp, unemployment, your group health insurance, your Medicare, et cetera. And so Robbie gave me all of these figures. And what we did was we backed out of the town side, those expenditures, and then added them into the school side, so that it more accurately represented the true expenses that the schools have to pay. And also, this would give the town a truer picture of what their budget would look like without all of those school expenses in there. And the percentage, as Toni mentioned when we first spoke, he said he thought it was going to be around 60%. I congratulated him because it came in at 59.53 for the schools and 40.47 for the town. And then the other thing that we're, this is still a draft form, we're waiting, I need to get some debt exclusion numbers from the Assistant CFO. And then that will help you determine your FY24 percentage, because you've got to back out your debt exclusions for FY23 and add in your debt exclusions for FY24. And as you can see, we had started this document before the governor's state aid came out, so we added the amount of the increase for the governor's state aid to you there. And that is net, we reduced it by the cherry sheet charges. And so that would now look, you know, as I mentioned, it is draft, 60.6% for the schools and 39.40 for the town. So that is a very quick overview of the process of this base budget document, and how you go about, you know, budgeting the revenues and then sharing the expenses. And Toni, do you have any more to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, so when the governor came out with her numbers on Thursday, it sort of threw us for a loop, because most of the increase was Chapter 70. Right, so normally Chapter 70 and what they call UGO, which is unrestricted government aid, which is the town's, you know, piece of the state aid, and then Chapter 70 is the school's piece. You know, that went up by almost 1.7 million, which is, you know, doesn't happen a lot, and that's great for the schools. But what normally would happen is we'd just take the state aid as a lump sum, you know, on that page two, that 13,188, well, that would have been approximately 15 million and change if we just plugged it in there and then used the 59.53 and the 40.47 in percentages. The difference of that, though, you know, you end up with a smaller number, right? It was about 600,000 less for the schools that way. So we didn't want to do that. So we actually did this to allow the schools to take the max benefit of the Chapter 70 funds, which is why we changed it up a little bit. You would normally wouldn't list the state aid separately like that, the way this is set up, but we wanted to account for the fact that most of that was an increase, was the Chapter 70. So I just wanted to point that out. And I, you know, this is what we're using as the baseline, we're working closely with Noel and Lisa and, you know, getting ready to build the budget, but I just wanted to, so nobody was surprised when they saw this, and this is where we're, you know, kind of moving as we, as we move forward, this is the document we're using to build the town budget and how we come up with the number, you know, for the schools, so. And then we can open it up for questions.
So this is on paper now, but your expectation is going into the next budget that this would be how you actually allocate the funds, and that we would then take on the expenses, these extra expenses that we have not been paying for out of our budget?
Well, I would say you've still been paying for them, you just, you were getting less money. Now we're just putting them in your budget.
Okay.
You know, but, but yes, as you move forward, like, you know, obviously, like debt service will go down every year, because as you pay off principal, that number goes down, as you pay forward. But then increases, like we're still waiting on the GIC number, our health insurance number, that's going to come out Thursday, they, it was told, March 2nd. So, you know, that would be, as you move forward in your budget, increases on the school side will have to be, you know, accounted for. But as you're moving forward and you need, you know, whether it's increased funding or whatever, you'll have that ability to take a look at your hard expenses and say, this is, you know, this is what's driving it, and this is where our expenses are laying out. But yes, but I would argue that you always were paying for them, it was just it was being shown on the town size budget, but it was, you know.
Right.
It would, it would impact how much the town could give you every year, because they were, you know, those increases would be absorbed on the other side. Now they're just showing up here under your column.
You have a question?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm reading, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, but if it weren't for the budget, the Chapter 70 money, how much more money would we be receiving in '24 versus '23? Is that 33, is 413 about?
It's that 34 number, 34, 311, 402.
Versus 33, 897?
Correct.
Yes.
So what is that for?
So, pardon me?
You're right.
So it's 413.
Change.
So that's, that would be the increase for next year had it not been for the fact that the Governor Davis money.
Right, but that 413, had we done it the other way, that 413 number would have been higher, you know, because you would have had, the state aid number would have increased, you know, so.
And this is a working document?
Correct.
And this doesn't reflect any potential changes in the GIC?
Correct.
Is this assuming a 5% change, or this is assuming that?
Nothing.
So these are just taking?
These are FY23's expenses that you just back up.
So assuming, you know, depending on those changes, it's going to have an effect on this as well as the town budget.
Well, yeah, because the school, it'll impact their, you know, their base budget document, right? These expenses now that, you know, whatever, total 9.5 million, that number's going to fluctuate a little. Yeah.
But the town's also keeping vocational school and the debt service, we're going to have on that.
Correct.
We're going to keep that on the town side.
Yes.
Any questions?
To follow up on what Jim just said then?
Yes.
We assume that there's going to be additional cost for medical insurance, right?
I think that would be a good assumption.
Yeah. Goes up anywhere from 7% to 10% normally, somewhere in that range, yeah.
And so we haven't seen that on our side of the budget last year. Is that correct? We didn't see that.
Although it was an increase, that same increase happened last year, it just impacted how much the town was able to give you. Correct. Yeah, I mean, it, it impacted your numbers last year, trust me, it was just, it was, you know, with that, whatever number that, that 23, 797, you know, without health insurance increase, that, you know, number would have been higher, right? So.
So if this goes up, and we expect it will a lot, that 413 would be reduced, is that right?
No, no, no.
It will be adjusted.
Adjusted, I'm sorry.
This isn't your fiscal '24 budget, right? This is a baseline from fiscal '23.
Well, this is what the fund you'll have available, the 35, 349 is the number that, you know, 942 is the number Noel and Lisa will build everything towards. They'll put the increase still.
It is the budget.
Yeah, well.
No, because if your, if your, if your health insurance goes up 400 grand, there's going to be an adjustment on this.
No, this, these numbers won't change. These are FY23, you've got.
Right, these are '23. But '24 is, so you're saying it's 40% or whatever, 40, what do you say, 60.6% of the money's available from the town?
Correct.
Regardless of where the health insurance comes out?
Right, right, just like it is on the town side, let's say we have to absorb our 40.47.
Right, but I think you have to, I mean, if that's on the town side too, so it's, if it's, you know, if it's 7% or whatever, right? So it's, what is it, 200 and something grand on the, on the town's, on the school side, and it would be another 200 grand on the town side, it'd be almost another half a million dollars that you'd have to account for.
Correct. But you don't account for it up top, you just, it's.
No, I understand you're not accounting for it up top, but, well, let me, let me put it this way, so if you're going into fiscal '25's budget next year?
Yep.
And now you're using, are you going into the year saying, okay, you're going to get, you know, 60.6% or whatever, say the 59.53%?
Yep.
But if health insurance went up this year 10%, that skews all these numbers out.
No, it's the same budget.
That's what I thought.
Right, because we have, because we have a large number of employees, the 10% is going to hit harder on our side.
Absolutely.
No, it's always going to be that, because you have, you know, 65% of the health insurance, 65, 70% of the health insurance cost. But what I'm saying is that has an effect, you can't just build this year to year saying you're getting 40, 60%.
That's how it works, yeah. I mean, you can, you can make adjustments and do offsets, you know, I mean, we can do whatever we want. If the town wanted to give the school more, you certainly could put that in there, but the baseline is, you know, this is the baseline. This is why you, this, towns and schools do this, so you know what the actual expense is. So if you needed to go for additional funding or find additional funding, you know, that's how you make the argument for it, make the case for it. But just like we have to absorb them, Jim, I mean, we have to absorb, you know, we're only getting, now, you know, whatever.
40, 30.43 or whatever.
Yeah, like $300,000 increase, and that's between all the union contracts and everything else, and an increase in health insurance on the town side, that won't be enough, so choices will have to get made.
However, if you're accounting for roughly, I don't know, would you say for new growth, 167,000 or something like that?
236, I think.
236, what was that?
New growth FY24, 236, 683. And we may tweak that number. Like I said, this is a draft, that number may.
Right, so that number may go to 275 or whatever.
Correct, and that will increase the schools by that 60%. Any increase, any changes in the revenue, it's a, it's a split between the town and the schools. So you get, the schools get the 60, the town gets the, you know, in this case, 39.4.
And that works as, because you don't really know that number until halfway through the year, right? I mean.
The new growth?
Well, not new growth, but local receipts, for example.
Correct.
You know, your room tax, mail's tax, whatever, tax size tax, those numbers are fluctuating a little bit usually.
Right, and then that's a strategy with those numbers too. We tend to keep those a little more conservative, so we try to, you know, build a little free cash, because anything that comes in over helps your free cash, which we use for capital. And, you know, that's the other piece of this too, is as we move forward, you know, trying to get the school due assessment done through brightly, you know, incorporating a one-stop shop capital plan that'll have all the town and school expenses, and we try to, like, take a holistic approach on capital, so the schools, you know, and the town, we look at both of those, and try to, as you know, my goal, to try to use free cash or other funding sources to try to fund the capital plan, so, and try to build that number up.
So I think, I think for, just in terms of your question about the health insurance, so, because I've looked at this, and we all know math is not my forte, and understanding the town's side and the offsets and all, that becomes very confusing. But if you look at the FY24 base budget of $35,983,378, it accounts for all of our school expenses, our salary and our expenses as we're projecting them for FY24. And on top of that, then all of those additional expenses that are on the top of the page, like the flood insurance, the workman's comp, and all those things, those things come out to about 9, 9,555,000 and change. So the 35,983,378 number looks like a really, really big number for the school district as, as opposed to what people typically see, which is roughly around a 20 to, you know, 22 to 23 million dollar budget. Although those expenses are paid for on the town side, they are school district expenses. So when you look at what does it really cost to run the Winthrop Public Schools, that's a real solid snapshot of what it costs. Where Suzanne's question came in was a question that, that certainly I have asked as well. It's great to know upfront how much we have in total, so we can start the budget process a lot earlier and, and really work the budget through systematically without worrying it, what are we going to get, what are we going to get, and then have to go back and, and make all, all of these different cuts. However, knowing that we have 35, 983,378 moving forward, and again, the numbers are rough, if the medical insurance numbers are higher, that number on the bottom isn't going to change. So we have to go in, into our budget and see how we can make that work. On the flip side of that, if the group insurance numbers are higher, you know, we get an 8% or 10% increase, but we have less employees taking medical insurance, the town doesn't come back and take that money out of that line item and bring it back over to the town. It leaves it with the school, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. So, you know, on one side we could be super, super happy, and then five minutes later, and, and a few maternity leaves, and a few new hires that need family insurance could, could be troublesome for us. On the school side, what it will also mean is that now that we've taken on health insurance, unemployment, we've never managed that before. So on our side, we're going to need to do a monthly accounting of what is happening with health insurance, because it changes, it can change every month, it can change six times in a month. For example, an employee taking individual plan for herself, has a child, and comes back and needs with this change of experience, which they allow you to change your insurance, that person now in October needs family plan. So the school's contribution to that insurance on, on a individual plan may be $4,000 for that person. When it becomes a family plan, that insurance can jump up to as high as $20,000 for the year on the school side. So those are things that we will have to work with the town to manage pretty much weekly, if not monthly, to keep a live understanding of how much money is in that, that expense line, because if it goes really, really high, we need to make adjustments within the school district in a timely manner, so that we're not left in June with a $500,000 deficit due to health insurance, or any one of those other categories, that's just, that's just the largest one. I don't know if that was helpful or not.
Well, you know, I guess my point is we're only level funded, right? And now we're only adding $413,000. So we were, we're behind last, we were behind for the last four years.
Last 40, I think. I think we've been under level service for many years, yeah.
Okay. And now, so this, this doesn't help us any. So I don't know how we don't need more money, is my point. I got it, the governor has been generous, and that may be our savior for this year, but the truth of the matter is the, the town of Winthrop's budget under this plan doesn't really get us any farther ahead than we were this last few years.
So I think that, I think that's somewhat truthful, and you guys can jump in on this as well. I think it is somewhat truthful that it may not move us forward in terms of having more money to spend in the school's budget. I don't necessarily see that it's going to be less money for us to spend in the school's budget unless those categories skyrocket. I, I'm not going to lie, I'm worried about health insurance, that is my biggest, that is my biggest concern, only because we have not managed it before, so I don't really know, and this is things that we're working on together with the town, what sort of the five-year lookback is on that, so how much over the, in the last five years has the town had to come up with at the end to cover the total cost year to year, and is there a trend towards that, in that? It, it's unpredictable because of the people that you have.
Yeah, I guess.
I think too, if you look at, you know, how this helps and changes things too, the majority, I don't want to say the majority, a, a very good portion of free cash comes from some of these items here, work, including health insurance, right? For the most part, we have been trying to get more conservative in budgeting health insurance, but for the most part, a, a good portion of our free cash comes from these lines. And I think it's important that, you know, could generate free cash on this side, or, you know, and maybe we could talk about an education stabilization fund too, that might come out of this, but, you know, these lines, for the most part, if you look at budget amendments that have been made on the day of passing a budget over the last 10 years, the vast majority request has to get funded from someplace, and for the most part, it usually gets funded from one of these lines, or, or the council reserve, or something like that, but it's, you know, I, I think it's an ability, what I would like to see, and, you know, with 65% for the fiscal year, 60% whatever we throw, it would be nice to see actuels?
Yep.
To, to have a look at that, because budgeted numbers, you know, for example, electricity, we could have budgeted low, and now with the crazy prices, we could be, you know, 20% low on electricity. So it should be reflected in this. So, you know, I would like to see these numbers based on actuels rather than based on budgeted, because, you know, it, it could change, especially in this day and age with energy costs and such, but you, you know, your debt service is going to basically be what it is, right? You know that, that a lot of these are relatively fixed, but.
Yeah, health insurance.
You know, the health insurance, it's fixed once you know the number, but it's, it's good to know the number before we make the budget, right?
Right.
But I would like to see an idea on this, like another column on 60% of actuels or whatever, or, you know, as the year is 60.
Oh, yeah, we can show that.
Whatever, we show that to say, you know what, this looks better, or it doesn't look better. You know, and then on the town side, we've got to be cognizant of the fact that the vocational school debt service is going to go up dramatically over the next couple of years. And, you know, Essex Tech is a moving number, and that's a number we usually don't get until we're already through the budget process.
Yeah.
It's kind of crazy.
Yeah.
So, you know, it does, to Suzanne's point, it, it makes you realize that, you know, for the schools to move forward, there's, there's more funding that's needed. And we have to be very cognizant of that as, as we go into the future.
Yes, Ms. Barry.
So I have a couple of questions. The first is around, in moving the funds over to the school budget, does the school department now have the responsibility of managing those expenses and those contracts and all of, all that comes along with that?
Monthly tracking as far as what we're spending, but as far as the GIC is laid out, like we've got that contract thing for the next, you know, two years, then we'll, as a whole, take a look, you know, maybe we look at Myer and a few other companies to see what the rates are.
Yeah.
But as far as, but it's like when we, like the Myer bill will come in for the whole building liability insurance and everything else, and you just lay it out, and you send it out, the school will pay their portion, the town will, they pay their portion, and it just, it really, it's an accounting, you know, function at that point.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that moving those over doesn't create any additional administrative work for.
No, the Myer media is usually with me and the, you know, CFO, they'll come in, and the Myer reps will come in, and we'll run through all the buildings and make sure we got adequate coverages, and we still do all that. But we've already sort of got a combined, a little bit of an HR department now, where we're tracking the benefits and, and things like that, so, but like Lisa said, there will be some additional, paying closer attention to the health insurance line.
Yes.
Like what's our monthly, okay, what, you know, what was the spike this month, or why did it decrease this month, so we can keep, keep track of that.
I would say that would be a fair amount of management on the school side, because if we don't manage it, then we don't know what we have.
Right.
And we don't know how to, how to shift the monies, in making sure that, especially when somebody jumps from a family to, you know, from a single to a family plan, we have to make those adjustments.
Are you concerned about bandwidth, you know, from the team to be able to manage that on top of also educating our students?
Yeah, a little, the bandwidth, you're looking at the bandwidth. You know, this is it, so.
We've got Dylan on board now too.
Yeah, so a, a little bit concerned, but I think, you know, that we should be able, we should be able to work that out, again, because it's, this is new for us.
Yes.
And we've, we've had a lot of conversations, and then sort of drilling down the detail of that. We do, out of our schools, out of the school budget, contribute to the benefits, office, personnel salaries, so, you know, there's, there's expectations of what needs to be done, and I think just between, you know, Toni and Dylan and, and us, we need to sit down and kind of work that out. I don't have any concern that it's not going to work out equivalently and, and that there'll be some support on the town side. I feel supported.
Okay.
That we will get that.
Great.
I think, just for the Chapter 70 increase, just so folks know, that large increase that we see, just to give you a sense, our Chapter 70 allotment that came into the, the town for FY23 was 8 million. increase, um, that we see, just to give you a sense, our chapter seventy allotment, um, that came into the, the town for FY twenty-three, was eight million, um, and change. And this year, went up to nine-point-seven million. And that's been longstanding work, uh, that's been done at the state level to revise the chapter seventy funding formula, something that hadn't been touched in twenty-five to thirty years, in terms of how they calculate, uh, chapter funding, chapter seventy funding for schools. There has been a tremendous amount of work from the Superintendent's Association across the entire Commonwealth, and I have been a part of that, Laurie has been a part of that, um, for years running now, trying to get people to understand why, what the calculation that was set up twenty-five to thirty years ago isn't really working anymore. Um, so, so that big jump you've seen, you see this year is a result of that formula, not perfect, still needs work, and we're still pushing, uh, for that work. But that is where you see that jump. That's not a normal jump, um, and I, and we probably won't see that size jump again.
Yeah.
And the, the intent was to equalize spending in, in, in revenue to, to communities in a manner that was, that was equitable. Um, and it hasn't been equitable for a, a number of years. So, we're, we're grateful for that, um, that money coming in, but you're not gonna see jumps like that year to year. It'll, it'll, will level itself off. So, I think that's important to know.
Moving forward, I think it's important to have a budget that also, that at least on paper reflects where we are apples to apples, so that when you're talking about the proposed expenditures for the next school year, it's comparable to what we're spending this year without these added expenses, so that we can understand what's happening with the operations side of things.
Sure.
The things that we...
We can break that, yeah. I think it's important to keep that broken out, uh, for the sole purpose of, that's all we've known, and that's how people have seen our budget. And when the community looks at, whoa, they went from twenty-three, you know, they went from twenty-three million, almost twenty-four million, up to thirty-five million, the expectation is, you know, where's the whiff of, what's in it for me? You know, all this extra money.
Right. You're all, you're all set.
So, now you can put back, you can put all the things that we want, all the, the five-year history of our asks that have been sitting there and just growing, um, I would say like a tree, but I don't wanna get into tree talk, but it, it's, it's, you know, all those needs that we've had, that we have not been able to get in, but we have articulated clearly that this is what our students have advocated for that, our students need. Um, you know, it, it creates a very clear picture, I think, of the fact that we have a revenue issue, maybe not with the chapter seventy money this year, but, you know, we have a revenue issue as a community as one, um, and we need to start to, to think outside the box about how to increase that revenue, um, in a, in a sustainable way, not, not a one-hit wonder, but a sustainable manner. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you.
Uh, if I could just ask about maybe Sarah too, um, you know, if you look at chapter seventy, it's up twenty, twenty-one percent, whatever it is, which is obviously ridiculously substantial. Uh, is that, what kind of increases are we seeing in other cities and towns?
I don't, I haven't checked yet. I mean, I can pull up other ten, you can go up the cherry sheet and check, you know, across the board, it has to do with a lot of factors, you know, demographics, student enrollment, et cetera, et cetera, but, um, I don't, not sure, every town got twenty-one percent? Um, I think, you know, we were one of the highest, I mean...
No.
Sarah, what did?
If, uh, what did Ipswich?
Ipswich didn't get that much.
Yeah.
Um, we, uh, we got about the same amount as the town, so we, we didn't, we certainly didn't see a million-dollar increase, not in Ipswich, no.
Right. Yeah, so not every town got that, so. I was, you know, pleasantly surprised, but surprised when I saw that number, so.
Based on demographics, yeah. I mean, but... Yeah, I mean, it, as we know, it's primarily based on demographics and census.
Yeah.
You know, so, so, we've had some change there. We've had some change there that has, um, helped us. Helped us with increase in funds, but also spending.
It's also, it's also adding expenses.
It's sort of, it's sort of a wash, um, but I'm grateful that, that the formula has changed to offset the wash, you, uh, offset the need that we have to a degree. You know, it seems like a large number. Laurie's well versed in this as well.
Just saying, everybody, everybody's different, because it's, it's based on the change to the Student Opportunity Act funds originally, and then she had the extra money that she put out, so some larger cities are getting big chunks, like Linds and Rebeers, based on the Student Opportunity Act. So, that's why you saw a lot of these other cities be able to settle higher contracts and things, and they couldn't plan for the additional money they'd be getting over the next seven years, whereas the smaller districts like Ipswich and us really couldn't, but this one-point-seven was just broken down by demographics after she put that first, what, I think, fourteen, you know, whatever it was, the starting number that she started with, the governor started with.
Okay.
They're basically like a different place.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for taking the time.
Yep, and if anything comes up, my door's always open, feel free to reach out, we can go over if you wanna sit down and have specific questions, so feel free to grab a cup of coffee or whatever, go over, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. You're very welcome, thank you.
And I have a motion to approve the minutes of February sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion?
Motion. All right, um, yeah, may I have a roll call, please? Thank you.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Second.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Uh, may I have my motion for warrant SPW twenty-three dash fourteen in the amount of three-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and twenty-six cents? Motion by Ms. Barry.
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW twenty-three dash sixteen in the amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-six, I'm sorry, eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and eighteen cents?
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Barry.
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Uh, abstain.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW twenty-three dash seventeen in the amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars and forty-five cents?
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Swope. Second. Second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Stay.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for a budget transfer in the amount of fifty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Letery, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for budget transfer in the amount of a hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten dollars and ninety-two cents?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Letery.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And I would like to have a motion to a, to approve a ten-thousand-dollar donation from Winthrop Charities.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope. Second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion on this, and do you wanna, Lisa, can you give us a...
Sure, I have it in the, um, and I'll skip it in the public relations, but, um, this particular donation came from, um, the Winthrop Charities Foundation, Michael and Donna Rosione, for, um, it was a generous financial donation, uh, after much discussion, and I think it's important to know that this, the donations that we do receive from Winthrop Charities are always well thought out, um, and brought recommendations and thoughts to the school from Michael and Donna, and they'll ask us questions about where our needs are, um, and then they come up with something for us. And this in particular was, um, to, to take the AED, the, um, defibrillator devices, uh, that we have for people who are in cardiac arrest, um, we have them in all of our schools, and to not only update them, um, to make sure that they're all, we would like to move to all Zoll machines, which are tied into the ambulance systems, so there's, it, it saves another, an additional five to ten seconds of transferring somebody, uh, from somewhere in, into an ambulance. Um, it'll allow us to do that, and it'll also allow us to expand them to make sure that we have, um, more than what we have right now. At the middle school, high school, we have one on every floor. At the two elementary schools, we have, uh, coming school, we have them one on each floor, and the Fort Banks, we have one, um, on the main floor, and we have an additional one in the gym. This will allow us to expand that to have them within our reach, so we're not running down hallways to find things. It'll also allow us to, uh, continue to use portable ones. We always take a portable device with us, uh, and with athletics, because we can't trust that another field may have those, and this'll give us, um, more to be able to do that. So, uh, we are very grateful, um, for their thought process, number one, uh, and number two, their generosity.
Any questions?
I'd just like to, um, you know, follow up with what Lisa said, and how thoughtful and, uh, well thought out their donations are, and they've done so much for the community as a whole, and, and the school specifically over so many years, uh, and it's kind of fitting that tonight, I think is, I think a couple nights ago was the forty-third anniversary of the, uh, the Russian game, but tonight is actually the forty-third anniversary of the gold medal game, so, uh, it's kind of fitting, but it's, uh, they're incredibly generous and, and love their hometown, and, and it shows.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for, um, can I take these together? The...
Yes.
William, the Fort Banks, PTO, Spring Social, and the PTO Literacy Night. May I have a motion to approve these, some of the grounds for that?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And then also a motion for the Winthrop Police Explorers for the Youth Police Explorer Competition.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Letery, second by Ms. Petrie. May I have a motion, please?
Uh, Ms. Leonard?
I mean, a roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Um, under reports, we have a curriculum.
And we met today, and, uh, we'll report on it next time, if that's all right with you.
Yes, that is fine. Superintendent's report.
Yes, a brief one. Um, a lot of my work has been, uh, dedicated to budget, and so you've heard, um, the town's side tonight, and we've had several meetings, uh, to talk about the town's new, uh, proposal. Also, wanted to update you, provided everybody in an email this week with an updated budget calendar. We can continue to work on the budgets and develop the budgets, uh, working on both the level service budget as well as our yearly needs-based budget. Our next subcommittee meeting is Monday, next Monday, at four-thirty, um, to, to take a look at the level service budget and see what that, um, forecast is for us as a start. Uh, staffing update, the principal search committee has completed all the, um, initial interviews and narrowed it down to two candidates. Both candidates will visit the Gorman Fort Banks this week individually on separate days, uh, and they'll meet with staff, uh, they'll meet with myself, parents, administration. Uh, they'll also tour the school and visit some of our classrooms and engage in, in some learning that we're, uh, is taking place at the Gorman Fort Banks. Um, and then, I'll, I'll be meeting again with some of the committee members, uh, and I will update the school committee on my final decision, uh, as to who we will be offering the position to. Um, we look forward to the feedback from our parents and from, uh, our staff members at the Gorman Fort Banks, as well as the administrative team. Um, this was a com- a, a comprehensive, um, little event. It's, it's sort of been a bigger, um, look at bringing people here to this district than we've had in the past. First time we've, um, not, uh, had an internal candidate looking to move up the ladder to fit, so I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Galvin for the work that she did and the thoughtfulness that has gone into that process. Um, we had a student on our committee, on our, uh, principal search committee, Christian Bonapone, ran into him at the arms the other night, um, and he stepped up and, and thanked me for being able to be part of the process. He felt that it was very, very interesting, um, to see people in an interview, uh, and he was sitting on the other side, um, and I said, well, that's gonna be helpful for you, because you can, you can understand now why you don't have to be nervous, because you were with the people that were making someone else nervous, and you've understood that those people should not make anyone nervous, because they're actually a really good group. Um, so it was really nice to see the student's perspective on that. So, I think Julie Barry asked us to, to have a student involved in that, um, so we were grateful for that. Uh, so more to come on that. Negotiation update, we have the first mediation session with the ESPs. That's on the twenty-first. Uh, it's my hope that we'll have a quick resolution, uh, and an agreement, and, um, hopefully with the assistance of an impartial mediator to come in and do some work with, with both sides, so we are looking forward to that. And that is what I have for my report.
Okay, do we have homeschool applications?
Those are just the water saying hello. Um, we do not have any homeschool applications.
Do we have appointments, resignations, retirements?
We have, uh, we have one resignation, uh, the school adjustment counselor at Winthrop High School, uh, that position has been posted, and we are actively trying to fill that.
And no leaves of absence?
No leaves at this point.
Okay, under new business, we are, we are able to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the Winthrop Teachers Association Nurses Unit. They have voted and approved, so it is now up to us to vote and approve. Can I have a motion, please? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swob, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? I want to thank the committee members who worked very hard and diligently in following through and meeting with nurses and arriving at that agreement. Having no other discussion, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have no unfinished business, and we do have public relations. A lot of really good things going on in our schools.
Want me to take that?
Sure.
Okay, so, congratulations to the Winthrop Middle School Quiz Bowl team for winning the competition at Malden Catholic on February 11. Take note, Winthrop Middle School was the only public school competing.
Wow.
So, great job to our students and staff who support the Quiz Bowl team. Congratulations to the Middle School Students of the Month. Grade, for January, grade six, Jacob DeVito and Derek DeVito. Grade seven, Caitlin Hung and Kelsey Talent. Grade eight, Scarlett Bomasi and Thomas D'Amico. So, we have four teams entering round one of the MIAA State Tournament this week, and all four games are at home. So, we have the boys' basketball versus Ma' Regional at 6:30 tonight. Wednesday night, we have the boys' hockey versus the to-be-determined people at 6:10. And Thursday, the girls' hockey is home against Hopkinton at 6 o'clock. And on Friday night, we have girls' basketball versus Monomoy at 6. So, congratulations to those four teams. Also, congratulations to girls' basketball, girls' hockey, and boys' hockey, all NEC Conference champions. Girls' hockey also clinched the 22-23 NEHL Conference Championship, so they are rocking it. I'd also like to thank our assistant athletic director Frankie Fabiano for being a major part of what has now, he has now racked up to 20 NEC Conference team championships. So, congratulations to Frankie for hanging in there through all those 20s, a pretty big number. Also, we have NEHL Girls Hockey All-Conference Team, Julia Holmes and Emma Holmes, and NEHL All-Stars, Mia Norris, Abby Holmes, Adriana Rizoda, and Talia Matucci. Congratulations to the boys' all-hockey league team. Petey Silverman was the MVP, and Jack Hayes and Nico Baybine, NEC All-Stars for that hockey team, Billy Hayes, Philip Ancori, and Colin O'Leary. And congratulations to the NEC Coach of the Year, Coach Dale Dunbar. Winthrop High School Student Council is participating in the polar plunge for Special Olympics in Massachusetts. They are conducting a 50-50 raffle and a $5 virtual ticket. You can see that on our website at the high school. The Class of 2024 is having a fundraising night at Hong Kong Dragon. Our community restaurants really step it up for us and offer these fundraisers on March 4th from 5 to 9. And there'll also be a split apart, that's also on our school website. Members of the National Honor Society are running a food drive from now until March 5th. They're collecting food for the local food pantry to provide food for those in needs in our community. If you wish to donate, please drop off canned goods and non-perishable items at one of the collection bins in town. The locations are Town Hall, the Meat Market, the Police Department, and the Winthrop Marketplace. They'll also have bins out in front of St. Michael's Church on each mass on March 25th and 26th. Preschool registration ends tomorrow, February 28th. It is a reminder that the children must be four years old by September 1st of 2023 in order to qualify. You can jump on the website at the Gorman Fort Banks and check that out if you haven't already. And that is all I have.
Wonderful. Any other public relations? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?